Was. Jim, I don't know.
Um, I can do much for that first. One minute.
Yes.
Make mention of that agenda. Uh, but to amend the agenda to add, I will say that there is a discussion of the firehouse resolution with those changes.
So. This motion made in second to. The agenda. Through the discussion.
Hmm.
If not, there's a favor signified by saying no. I don't know, I have a close name. Change, change the adopted. We have any else? I'm sure. What you got to. Uh, something about thirty minutes. Well, I heard. My councilman. Hence, second by councilman Solomon. With twelve minutes as well. Or his president. Our only questions. Hours, deficiencies, or. Positions they don't need for the minutes. Seeing them, we're hearing them. Those in favor, adopting the seventy minutes. For this matter, in between third place, signified by saying no. I don't know, I have a close name. Adopted. Jim, I don't think, public remarks. The UN president desires to make public remarks at this time. Sorry.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I am Sashu, registered veteran of Tamil state. Would I be, uh, to the council tonight about a resolution that you put in the voting committee?
Mm-hmm.
I have several questions and personal opinion. And, uh, I guess my first question was, what happened between twenty-third and tonight? Why did you. Try to change from what you adopted for twenty-third? To become the same thing tonight? I don't understand what happened. So something to answer that in the later, very future. Um. How would you be able to get chosen? I would not see anything where the East and West as far as acting for volunteers to sit on this committee. I don't know how, uh, people got, how this committee work. It was not the average, I was looking for volunteers. And we decided to take some of the entire council, the town manager. The, uh, the fire commissioners, the fire department. Um, it's like one of that. Um. I saw a new resolution that will, uh. Take the area in some positions of that minute. And I wanted to, uh, the chief. Uh, you know, that fire department, you know, this. And, uh, the chief, the fire commissioners and firefighters. Nine country. And soon, uh, we call someone who has firehouses in that now. Um, I want to give them just to end them down a little bit. It's just after ten of next year. And when the company comes back and makes a decision. Three people, every council, uh, decides. You have to go down. Obviously, some managers and goes a little bit more missing. Iron architect, other contractors, we're looking at fifteen houses, they're trying to look at a firehouse, they're looking at four to five years. Uh, to me, this is just too unacceptable. And my likely reason was that she was going to turn, turn election. The last resolution, uh, the council in Houston, not moving to start in six months, seemed like a good idea. But. What happened now? So I. We were prepared to, uh, not accept the new resolution and go back to, uh. We will surrender to accept the twenty-third, twenty-fourth time.
Thank you. So anyone else, would I commit public remarks this time?
Good evening, uh, Dallas, I'm a member of the fire department in town, I've been a member for, uh, four years now. I just like to comment on a resolution change that was, uh, dropped for tonight. Um, one was already discussed, I do see an office of fire chiefs, uh, should be involved in the community. Uh, it was originally, I remember that right, uh. Um, he was only. Non-veteran member. So I was just there to be able to offer some insight, offer some questions, maybe provide facts, because that's something that. I really look at as a member of town council and the building of the town. Uh, I'm not one for commerter. Tell me, I'm hard as a hard as it is, I think they're like that. I was not pleased to get done the right way. Um, they just showed it removed a member of the fire department. Again, it's just being able to provide a different perspective. About whether the two pictures of the town council pixels are recommended, however, I just think having more insight into actually. The nature of the fire department, the facilities are the better. Uh, then you see the best way to look at it, maybe out of members company two and company one. You know, instead of also insight in both sides of town, I would just have a one member, I just still just let it fit in balance. So I just like to say, uh, we would draft with a little bit better than the one that's being prepared tonight. Um, so I'd like to, council to, to discuss some of that, so thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make public remarks at this time? They went on. You know, I've been.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, if you have something online, raise your hand up, it's better.
Yeah. I can tap the first.
Jim, can you hear us?
I see Jim on the, Darren, if you can, can you raise your hand?
Oh, yeah, there's a, there's a spot in there, I don't know how the phone's going. But we can't even hear her.
Hello?
There you go, we can hear you, can you hear us?
Yeah, and also, that's list, everyone listening to you guys is completely garbled, can't make out a single word. That anyone is saying.
And Brian.
Okay. So are you hearing me clearly?
Yeah.
Okay. The only thing I wanted to comment on, uh, was the garbled noise and also the noise. I have some issues with, with the. The noise ordinance. And is that feedback I'm getting?
Well, Steve, because we don't hear it here.
Say that again?
He can not hear it here.
Whatever, okay. I can't, I can't understand the word.
I'm sure it's clear, but that doesn't. So you can hear the kind of speaking with your class.
No.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm glad you're alive.
Are you hearing us now?
Now, it's not any better. Or maybe I'll try later on in the meeting.
Is this through the YouTube TV or Facebook, uh, the, um? Yeah.
It is a Zoom. Present. Could be a Zoom issue.
All right, because we can use both, I guess Zoom goes through the, the TV.
Suppose I'm a good one.
Uh, I don't know, I, I might take it personally.
There's a.
First chat, my name is. A little ball. Does that mean we have a little bit of speaker that could do, uh, behind, uh. Close to their speaker that could add on, go back to that.
Just a bit of water.
This is. You know, because I'm doing.
I told him one, we asked him to finish him and pack it.
So change anything? You got to change anything online?
What do you want to do more? What do you want to do next?
No, it's not, turn off.
Don't notice if there's sometimes stuff, you know, we started out.
That means it's, I think. I was, I was thinking of going to the other one.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if we turned them all off, that was separate of the feedback. So we get feedback on whatever.
Dave went out and checked.
Bridget's still online. She's back, uh.
Maybe need to talk a little to, so Dave can hear it out.
Having that's been just on you, they're giving you their software. Someone without their hand. Please, sir, here, if they can hear us. Hi. You can run in the back, and I don't think there, can you guys see us? Uh, can you hear us on?
Is it distant or just muffled?
It sounds like it's delayed.
I didn't sound better on YouTube.
I didn't know, I mean, to even see this shit. Bad technology. What's that?
Shallow, yeah.
That's what's out for, if any better. We should have YouTube or Zoom, I mean.
Yeah, but we should have, we must, can I tell you? Um, can you guys chat if you're on Zoom and can now hear us, or if you're on YouTube and can hear us? Somehow, let us.
I know the middle would put a chat button center. And then after that, I don't have that option. This one was, again, was a boot.
Ask if it's any better now.
Any better? Sound?
It's sound, it's sound a little.
Yeah, less muffled.
Yeah.
I bet. Less muffled. Still muffled, but less. We'll have to deal with it. Yeah, a little person. Listen to that chat. No, she's got a little, that's her, that's her. Yeah, the whole of it. Oops. It's red, it was red, it just said. I wish it was better. Still bad. Might have someone. But I had, I'm a fact. But this is how the last three meetings, I took the Santa, I was seventh, couldn't figure out why.
Part two, they're still.
Yeah, so it's not accepted in the room.
There's a joke in there somewhere.
We're gonna have to go back to Duncan.
Uh, why is the telephone ringing, on and off on the test microphone?
It seems to be picking it up, but it's, you can't, but it's not getting out of. Whether, whatever, like this, a speed issue there on the net, it's from the zoom, it's from the. Oh, that was, that was, that looks like. That's not the issue. And post captions?
On YouTube, there's post captions.
As I was.
Yeah.
Wow, no high tech. Well, people are mad at me, I'm not saying. Can we give a number to call in, and you can remember can talk to the affairs, but they're just going to hear us?
But if they call, maybe you should go, I don't know, if it's any different, then they can call them, or send them, so instead of. Trying to do it through.
You can get rid of it, she just can.
I have a comment.
All right, the technical person, it's possibly Cat and Blackout. Let's start us into, uh, Dave's iPad. So that's her, the son.
So last couple meetings, no, no recording hasn't been that bad. Like when I listened to it.
And I never listened to it. Also, remember that they're on show.
Yeah, it's a live show, so.
There is audio. The sound that we get is as if you've got a microphone on the floor. That's what's causing the muffling. We can't change that. It appears in any of the audio sources that we have access to. Mr. Chairman, I think you have to proceed, and people are going to have to put closed captioning on, uh, to resist themselves. And then, as we get to people, they can certainly speak, and we can hear, outside of the room, we can hear everything fine, so. Their phone outside of the room.
Right.
And there's no, it's, it's just like, can we stop, can we start the movie, and have two, uh, two, uh, audio on now? Can you just stop this even when you start it? And then we will have everyone.
They're gonna have to log back in. I don't think we can log them back in.
I don't know, start.
That'll be, go back to home. Yeah, I mean.
Can you get one of them to talk and tell them to tell the rest? Both of you now. Clearly. Those, those.
Brian, David.
Hey folks, I don't know if you can hear me, um, you sound like you're in a garbage can right now, and, uh, it's pretty terrible. Um, I think you guys should adjourn this meeting until you get the technical problems fixed, it's kind of terrible, but. At any rate, you're gonna do what you're gonna do. Uh, so I'm gonna make a comment, hopefully you can hear and understand me. Um, a couple things, uh, I know there's still talk tonight about the, uh, the, uh, sound ordinance. Um, I, I, I don't think the town wants or needs that right now. Uh, so I'd urge you to table that, uh, for future discussion. Uh, regarding the firehouse committee, um. Sort of the same, uh. Talking point, I think you guys should not be staffing that until after the election. You're gonna put folks in, uh, in seats, and then they're gonna lose their town council seats, and you're gonna have no town council representation on the committee, it just doesn't make any sense. Uh, the election's in a couple weeks, just wait till the election, let the new guys, uh, staff the committee, and then you can have a nice clean start without, uh, false start. I think that's really the only, uh, the only intelligent choice, uh, frankly, um. I'd say more, but honestly, just listening to you guys talk for the last, uh, fifteen minutes, uh, it sounds like you have a bag over your head, this is not. The first meeting, it's been terrible, although this is the worst it's been. I don't know who's in charge of the audio, but I think that should be a top priority for the town council to figure it out. Because it, it's just very unprofessional, and it's, it's lousy. Uh, but anyway, thanks for trying, and, uh, have a great night.
Is it possible to pick it up to habits? Could hear stuff, because everybody seems to have. So it's like they're picking up the rear.
Make sure Thomas give him the computer.
That'll be right on the Zoom or speaker, it's. Is, is not functioning, but. It looks like it's picking up her microphone off the rest of something.
Yeah. That was a little, because of the, the computer plan, I understand, let's see there. Which makes sense. We read that, we should read the papers or something.
Who, who's out in the home system, so.
That's a time, I don't know, I didn't do a solution.
Well, that's, 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 that's. Together in some way. Alright, fine. We're establishing a fire site. Whereas the town, so, this is the town council's term, but it wishes to advise the ownership and the previous period outside and development. It wishes to receive, establish as follows. This is the Eastern Time, so, so critical importance of providing safe, special facilities for the Eastern Fire Department, who serve in protection. Safety, our citizens, as their certified, some other disasters threatening, problems, establish a fire for site and development. Whereas the existing station number one, in the three bar, and station number two, located at three sixty-six West Street, have served the. Been there seventy years. State of the reference that. It's operational safety or regulatory requirements necessary for effective protection. Disaster response of suitable term you see. This is the best interest of the town to undertake, uh, thorough and transparent. The crew, the fire protection, to disaster response needs. The adequate seat of current facilities, often, should protect and respond, and suitable equipment to grow. We will be at the town council here, since the issue adopted on September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, through the fire site in the community. The terms are, the town council, shows a fire site, composed of eight members. The crew, charged with the following responsibilities, one, value of the current protective protection from disaster needs for town, staffing, equipment. Standards and timing, considering population wealth and residential or commercial development. It's certainly the time for conservation development. Expected to be adopted and released out of fire in June of twenty twenty-six to assure proper and after replacement. Of whose coverage support acceptable ISO ratings for the community. Two, undertake review, commission of the fire stations one and two, and equipment facilities, including, that completes one. P N standards, national standards. Eighteen accessibility and applicable codes and state regulations, and protecting cost estimates to bring the existing facilities into better ones. That are mainly assessed and the existing town, that concerns a suitable site, they will have, assuming, says so, infrastructure, but this would prove that to a. Attain cost estimates for construction, firehouse at such time and time. Should we assume the town with them, so we shall evaluate other potential, the type of sites suitable for new items. Attain the best estimates for the purchase of such sites and construction of new items. Such evaluation shall consider the acquisition, the structure fitting, existing. Conversation, conversion into a firehouse. Such evaluation shall not include full study and consideration of the eleven street facility. The selection of a new firehouse site shall consider the impacts to neighborhood, project phasing. Estimated lifecycle costs and potential funding sources, including all applicable federal and state grants, as well as municipal bonding, state borrowing, and other financing options. The committee shall provide a written report with its recommendation to the town council. Your report will summarize its findings as to estimated cost and location.
Your report will summarize its findings as to estimated cost and location and other relevant data compared to other sites. Investigated supporting its recommendations, whether a new firehouse is needed or renovation of the existing fire stations is a preferable option. The report will include recommendations on how this project will be financed along with other relevant information. Be it further resolved that the firehouse site and development committee shall consist of eight voting members, all whom are registered voters or property holders of East Hampton. Appointed by the town council for one year term commencing October fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Should a vacancy in the committee occur during the one year term appointment, the town council shall fill said vacancy. And according to the established procedures, policies and procedures. The town council members initially appointed will survive their election term. The chairman and vice chairman of the firehouse site and development committee will be appointed by the town council at the time of member appointments. And the recording secretary shall. Be elected by the committee members at its initial meeting. Be it be it further resolved that the firehouse site and development committee shall consist of eight voting members. Pointed by the town council as follows. Two members of the town council, one member of the board of fire commissioners, one member from the East Hampton Fire Department, one member from the board of finance. Three members of the public at large. The town manager and the town finance directors shall serve as non-voting members of the committee and advise rate capacity. Be it further resolved, firehouse site and development committee shall issue its final written reports to the town council no later than twelve months from adoption of this resolution. Unless an extension is granted by the town council. But we saw the microphone issue.
All right, I'll argue things. Thanks for talking about the meeting. Did you have a comment? It's okay if I just read the comment since I.
Didn't catch you.
So my text left the meeting so bad, my hand was up and it got overwhelmed, so.
I don't think it got overwhelmed. Bring everybody on board.
I have no problem counts against reading the text message as long as he shares the visual of that text message with the secretary. Terrification of things.
Yeah. He just says uh. If it matters, I'm not favor the noise ordinance. Uh at all and thinks that the fire committee should wait.
Give the name and address of that person.
Uh I don't have a clue where her address is. Um it's uh Rebecca Harvey. Can you have the other screenshot and send it to?
So are we still involving that from him?
I I could hear it in the hallway after we switched one last time to the Allo microphone. It's not great. It's it's because it has picked up. From the entirety of the room rather than coming through the system like you were trying to do before. I think you can proceed.
I got it's better. It's still not great, so I'm. My concern is we've already lost quite a few. People.
There are four fewer now than here.
Oh, I thought there was. Yeah, because it's twenty. Okay.
So I think there's one person with the hand raised.
Hello. Okay, uh you guys can hear me? Okay, uh yeah, I'm I'll make it real quick. I'm just gonna reiterate what I had said last meeting. Um I mean, uh I got two few things actually. Uh one thing is um obviously. I'm against the noise ordinance. Um my perspective, I come from, I I'm always looking to promote agriculture activity within the town. Um but the way this, you know, was written, um what I saw in the town packet, it looks like it hasn't changed really from last meeting. Uh I don't like the idea that um a resident has to go get a variance. From the town council to do stuff that is always been legal and never been a bothersome really to most residents in East Hampton. Um a lot of things we're talking about is people doing on their own private land, things people have been doing for generations. Uh I think the majority of the town uh would not uh agree to go along with this. They would not approve of this. Um. I feel that it's kind of creating, making the town into an HOA of sorts. Um a lot of the noise complaints that come across in the town are typically private matters between neighbors. And it should stay that way. Um there's basic state guidelines of quiet hours after ten or whatever the details of that are, and that's kind of where the town ended up with the noise ordinance years ago with the. Whole thing with Angelicos and stuff. Um I just think it's a bad road to go down and I uh urge the town council to not even pursue this any further, just completely just. There's a lot bigger bigger fish to fry, if you will, in this town. Uh to focus on. Uh that's my comments on that. The other thing I would like to bring up. Is I don't know if it's ever been officially brought up, but I'd like to bring it to the town council if this is even the right spot, right place to rather. Um I'd like the town council to consider uh creating uh East Hampton as a right to farm town. I think that's got a lot of support from a lot of residents. Uh not so much, not only residents that um you know engage in things like agriculture and keeping of chickens and whatnot. Uh but also other residents that want to keep East Hampton a basic country town. Uh there's a lot of development, a lot of change, a lot of progress. Not all progress is bad, I understand. But you know, making sure we, you know, set in stone that the town um holds to its roots are important. Other towns have done this like Durham, uh Haddam, um you know, it's pretty basic, pretty much says anything of sight, smell, sound. Or you know possession that uh it contributes to agriculture, um the no ordinance shall infringe on that. Uh there's different ways you can word that, of course, uh different towns have a different ways. Uh but about twenty years ago, a lot of towns took this seriously, like those towns I listed. Others didn't like Glastonbury. And they really lost a lot of the character of their town, in my opinion. I don't want to see that happen to East Hampton. Some argue it's already started. Um I think we still have a lot of great things in town. I'd like to. Um you know, uh be able to conserve. Uh but anyways, that's my comments. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I hope you could hear all this. I know it's been a big audio issue all night, but uh thank you and God bless.
Jason.
Jason, go ahead. We can hear you. He's muted.
He's muted. Jason, you can unmute. Please come back, please.
You can come back. We'll move on at this point. Get on. Wild. Ask the committee. Public remarks.
Jason, you're muted. If you'd like to speak to us, you can unmute and go ahead.
There's no one else with their hand raised. We close. January four public remarks at this time. January five presentations.
We have no presentations this evening.
January six bids and contracts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item you have is the uh. Proposed extension of two new amendments for the contracts we have with. Uh VHB for brownfield activities specifically related to the four properties uh on the edge of the village center. On Summit Street and Long Street and in Walnut Street. I'll remind the council that we have seven hundred thousand dollars in grants from uh the federal government through the EPA. And from the state through the uh Department of Economic and Community Development, DECD. Um. And uh so we're proposing the the brownfields agency rather for the town's proposing. Uh amendment number four for the EPA contract and number five for the DECD portion of the contract. To bring the to add uh certain work related to um underground storage tank rooms. Additional soil evaluation. Assistance related to uh reporting on significant environmental hazards, groundwater evaluations. And perhaps most important, the development of the remedial action plans uh for those four sites. You'll note that the DECD portion does exceed the total two hundred thousand dollar grant we have. As I indicated to you the last time we had this conversation. Uh any of those balances that are not funded by the DECD have already been indicated that the EPA will cover them. So we would transfer those final dollars to the EPA grant at the end, which is why. Uh we're also monitoring the total grant amount from the total contract amount that we have with. Uh VHB of five hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars and change. So we'll keep an eye on that and make sure that we don't exceed that seven hundred thousand dollar mark. Um for the grants combined. So that we know that we get all of it funded, but otherwise there's no match for the town. No match at all for the town. So at the recommendation of the brownfields agency, they would ask that you approve both amendments uh to the contracts with VHB.
And can you approve the? So are there any questions or discussion regarding the? Go down to those in favor, signify by saying aye. Resolutions, plans, these policies and practical measures.
Seven eight firehouse resolution, Mr. Mark and Jill, the resolution.
I would uh. The resolution has read. During. The interval. Technical issues. And the resolution to send you to establish firehouse site and development committee.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, thank you.
Session.
Just point out what differences are essentially to the previous version. Versions. We want to see it today. First of all. It's reducing the number of members from nine to eight. And. In lines, one line. There's no difference. Other than. It's an even number of members. This is a committee that's going to work together. This is interesting. The ball is essentially whole consensus and it's those that have been working on this. The second major issue is. I took one of the members. From the town council. Blocked. That had, that was me. And I will not. Be serving on the committee. More pointed to me. There are several other minor changes in who represents. Various aspects of the community. And I think some of the questions that were raised. By Mr. Swan, if I'm not mistaken. You'll see when. We appoint the members of the committee tonight. There are ample recognition of those in the fire community. Really not a lot of changes, as you see. The idea was to have a balance in a lot of different points of view from within the community. Because. Obviously. Previous attempt. Last month. Failed. Did not go forward. And we can't have that again. Twelve months. Yes, may seem like a long time. But for those of us that have been working on this, at least within the last two years on this council. Know that it takes a lot more effort than one would think of just. Here is what needs to be done. You gotta do it. You've got to put the plans together. In this case, we're gonna have to find a new, probably find a new site. Negotiating that can take time. As we we saw in the last. Iteration scheme. So. Those are. Essence of changes. Knowledge and thank Mr. Hince for his original draft. I had taken what he had presented, made some modifications and things. Because I thought it needed to be in that. And then when rethinking this. Over the last week or so. Made the recommendations that are coming forward here. And it is important for the farming. Mini volunteers and those associated. This is not a closed committee. This is going to be obtained similarly to that that was engaged with the ambulance association. With a whole variety of folks, either as volunteers, as mission members. Or just plain citizens. Best plan to stamp this. Emergency fire services. That's the essence of. The question.
Uh I.
Um I have to say, uh. I do have many concerns. Uh I did have a letter uh that I quote with my uh first resolution. That I do not think any uh. Committee should inform, especially with one town council meeting uh prior to the election. I think that that is absolutely ridiculous. Um the fact that. We have a change uh the week after uh you. Accepted the resolution uh is concerning. Um. I do recognize the fact that you didn't get it right the first time and you you didn't haste and uh. They are trying to correct it. Um but I don't think in the eleventh hour of our term is the right time to do it. I also have great concerns that it was not in the newspaper for people to volunteer to come to serve on this committee. Uh I don't even know if many of the community even knew uh that it happened. Uh unless there's twenty seven and about another thirty here. I I don't know how many in the community actually even know it exists. Uh so I do have some great concern about uh lack of input from the community. Uh so I guess that that's where, you know, I'm listening. I think this whole thing should be tabled and. After the launch.
Thank you. Uh I I think Mr. Swan, Mr. Trent made a lot of good points this evening and it's just touched on. Um far as I know, Marty's been in there five years, thirty years, forty years. Fifty. And. Uh I I think he has uh some very good points to say, Mr. Trent, and um removing the chief kind of bothers me. He wasn't a non-voting member anyways. I think he still should be on board on this. Uh. The man has a lot put in on this and uh so I don't I don't have the agreement with that. I also not agreement on the year. I'd like to see if we can shorten that. And having this this council vote for it, I think it should have been turned over to the following council after us. Um but there you go. I think Mr. Swan, Mr. Trent made some very good points.
I'll just make one comment. Because we're going to. My attention is this new slower point. The eight numbers tonight. The chief is one. This is, this is a town council. So.
Words that say it's the town council committee. Why? So it doesn't need to go through appointments and so the none of the other committees that we have to count. Words that say it's a town council committee, why, so it doesn't need to go through appointments, and so the, none of the other committees that we have to count. Go through the appointments subcommittee for, and we don't request.
We don't.
So. It, it may not be a mandate, Dean, but here's the reality. The reality is you're stacking the deck with the people that you want for your intended purpose. That is a problem, especially with one town council meeting prior to the election. That is a concern of mine, do what you want, if the council changes, the whole resolution could change in another month.
That's true. But. I think you'll find it's a very balanced committee, that's how you're looking into this.
Is there any other discussion?
Uh, just a question, uh, Dean, did you say that the fire chief was going to be one of the, uh, at-large members?
Yeah, at-large.
Uh, members of public at-large, which would?
No, representing fire.
Representing fire. So he's not, he's not.
So that means there's only, is the only one from the fire department that you gave, the other you put from, since there's only one member from the fire department, so you're excluding?
No, not excluding.
You're not including?
Well, you couldn't, you want to, maybe 50 or 70 people. No, I don't think so.
But our presentation from at least both departments, and Stalin said would be more than adequate.
I think that we made a decision, I thought we had made a decision in the fire community, that it's one company now. One fire department.
Any other discussion?
One, almost the rest of the proposed committee. Yeah. We don't hold on. It's.
I don't think who's on the committee.
I don't think that's, that's what needs to be done on the committee.
Right, I mean, the, the specific people on the committee can change anyway with the next council. They can get rid of this entire thing if they don't like it.
How many members in the, the resolution? Council, town council representatives, beginning Council Nautic and Council Figo. Council Nautic would be the chair. Tim Figo is, we're the vice chair. Board of Finance, Kurt Kaminsky, representing them. Fire Commission, William Abbott, third, who represents the fire commission. Rob Rainville, chief, who represents the fire department, and three public members. Alan Wazowski, James Radovich, Mary Ann Tassler. Essentially selected or sought out by me to be representing the fire community and the community of East Hampton. They will, I think the people that are involved. People who may be informed, they lose their standards, and I think they're also capable of asking tough questions. When you go through this process, it doesn't stall. Six months and some say a year. See, there's, there's a year in the resolution, because it, it will take that. You have to search out by new locations. For a new location, if a fire in that, engine in that, in the facility, that would definitely take longer than twelve months. But it can be done in six months. I'll say. Gives a flexibility to work through for me.
Favor, discussion?
Is an elected member of the Board of Finance appropriate for a member at large?
I'd budge that over, the law, it would be appropriate to have, um, Mr. Radovich, who are not a member. The Board of Finance, who went through some serious discussions within their board regarding the referendum we were restoring. And this helped to rank and give some insight to this committee.
If the Board of Finance is already represented with one member, then that effectively be giving them two.
Well, it could.
Well, it would.
I think it.
I don't, I, I personally don't think it's appropriate for a sitting, uh, Board of Finance member to be chosen as a, a member at large from the public.
Any further discussion? Paul Revo, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Uh, so that's four, three, so motion carried.
January, any, any business, subcommittee reports and updates, living, subcommittee reports, updates at this moment? Any discussion of homestead property tax exemption?
Last, uh, meeting a couple of weeks ago, you talked about the concept of the homestead exemption ordinance. And, uh, had a couple of questions, uh, to, uh, that you requested that we look into. We were able to look into some of those things and provide you with information, uh, about sort of the magnitude of, um. Residential property values in the community and a variety of other things, including what ability the commu, the council has to. Further subdivide, so to speak, the group, all, uh, primary property, or the property owners with your primary address in, um, East Hampton. As you saw in my notes, if you're discussing that last item with the town attorney, Rich Corrella. He would suggest to you that you have really no clear ability to subset that group. Based on, um, based on the construct of the law and the way the courts have treated, uh, the way those, those laws are to be read. Uh, so, well, you can be more restrictive in certain cases, in this instance, that could now be considered being more restrictive than the state's, uh, the state legislature allows.
Sorry. Can you put a, we can understand.
You cannot, you may not, uh, further subdivide the group of people who refer to as owners with their primary residence in East Hampton. So as you had alluded to before, it doesn't really provide for an income test, uh, in qualifying, it doesn't allow for, uh, a, um. An age test, any of that sort of, um, breakdown.
So, so could the, could the percentage be allocated to different, that I use of property?
Meaning different percentages for different values? Um, I did not get an opportunity to talk with the, the attorney about that today, uh, so that's a question that would remain open. Uh, I don't, I don't know whether that would be allowed. Again, the construct of taxation laws is pretty, um, pretty clear that it is applied uniformly, notwithstanding the changes that the legislature has authorized with various exemptions. So I think that that concept, one where, uh, a lower valued home, presumably it would be a lower valued home, would get more of an exemption than a higher valued home, for example. I think that that's a bit of a stretch, although admittedly, I did not get an opportunity to talk about that concept.
I can't even imagine that being in any way, shape, or form. Uh, but I thought the, the part of this was going to be, once we have all the redone numbers and to try to figure out. Because the commercial, uh, per setting, it's pretty relatively low, uh, as far as value, you said that that was going to regain the same in the property housing. Uh, residential housing, you have a higher increase, and you haven't got those numbers yet. So we really, um, this is just all conception with this point, anyways, we have some red numbers when we even want to pursue a homestead credit, correct?
Well, you certainly don't know those numbers for sure right now. In terms of how you pursue the, the homestead credit, the issue becomes whether you can get that in place in time. We won't have finalized brand list until probably January. We have to step by the step. And this way is at least set up that people would make that application to be done by December, um, as you point out, so. It's hard, and all we can do is really work with concept numbers and try and understand, uh, how, um. How the impact would work through the system, so to speak, right? So what I mean by that is. Because we have nearly 90% of our community in, in residential town. The one upside to that is that because we have such limited value elsewhere, the shift that I talked about last time is actually sort of mitigated. Because there's not a lot of value in commercial properties that, um, that benefit from that shift, right? So the impact of the shift is sort of spread on lots of residential property. I don't want to throw a number out, but it's probably, um, it's probably in the neighborhood of 1% or 2%. That our residential property owners would feel, uh, even if there was no tax change, no change that is in our tax levy. Um, and actually, it's likely that some of the other segments of the community, because there's such a big population of residential property. That some of those other segments, commercial, industrial, would actually see a reduction in their tax bill in that scenario. Um, picked up, of course, by the residents, that's the downside of all of it, right? That's the downside of that shift in values. Interestingly, the homestead has some weird, um, impacts if we start to apply it. Um, as far as we can, as far as we can tell, if we start to apply that homestead, um. While it can certainly mitigate what a resident owner, that is a primary, that is an owner of residential property, that uses that property as their primary residence. We could probably mitigate nearly all of the impact, well, depending on how I have a homestead exemption, we would, we would go there, right? Start to take away impact, uh, from their tax bill. But it has major implications for the non-resident homeowner. Where if we can mitigate the impact to like a half percent for a, for a resident owner. Their next door neighbor has, who is a non-resident, might see a 5% or 6% increase, again, with no change to our tax. Okay, so that's, all my comments on it are based on no change to the tax. Um, and the impact on commercial properties in those scenarios, um. Are not necessarily mitigated until you really get to a high, um, until you get to a high exemption rate for the, um, the homestead exemption. Where maybe you can, way up at a 25% exemption, you might start to see, uh, some impact on commercial, or the, basically, non-residential properties. Right, so it's a very complicated concept. And I, I don't know that you can possibly be ready to even say you think you want to do this tonight. But I wanted to bring you more information, I wanted you to have the opportunity to hear what the attorney said, at least on the questions you had. Know the details of what our, um, our brand list is, how it's, is composed, how it's comprised. Um, and be able to think about other questions, you might have, um. The members of the community that are running for this body have this information as well, and are certainly welcome to ask those questions. But it's, we, we have run some simulations, or I have run some simulations, to try and. Approximate, that's the best I can use, approximate how the impact would be, would play out. Uh, it does what I would expect, it helps out that prime, that owner that's a primary resident. Um, but it can be pretty impact for someone who is a non-resident.
I think that happens all over Florida properties.
It does, you're right. Certainly happens.
Probably unique to United H. And that's why a lot of people would go down on homestead, because then they're blocking taxes when they're scaling, thanks to the real estate department, so, uh, you know, it works whole place.
It does, you're absolutely right.
Any other comments or questions? I do think the timeframe within this calendar year trying to look this into place is probably questionable. I didn't help just, you all feel, you should put this on.
You know, it'd be nice to get it in place for the residents to give them some relief, but not knowing the numbers on how that impact is going to be makes it difficult to approve.
My understanding, they have to apply?
It is set up as an application, we have talked in staff about how we might try to figure out how to do this automatically. Um, we haven't come up with a way to do that. Perhaps we have to ask the municipalities to figure it out. Uh, but we have not come up with a way that they can, that we can do it automatically and be close to correct.
Let's face it, if people think they're getting tax free, they're going to apply. Just like in Florida, I don't think every town is like, hey, you're a homesteader, and it's, uh, I want my taxes frozen.
First, remember it's not tax free. Um, uh, but second, uh, just for my own calculations, I kind of estimated 75% of the value would be in homeowners who had primary residence here. Um, I think that Jeff and I had done some work, and maybe it's about 20 to 20, I think I had said that in my memo, it's about 20 or 25% of our residents. Seem to get their, um, seem to have a different address than the property address for their tax bill or for communication with us. We're taking that to mean that they don't have that as their residence, so. Are there questions that the council would want us to look at? Do you not want to see this again until after the election? Are there other things that you want to talk about this morning?
Determining residency? Voter registration, records available for that, like, because you can't be registered in two towns, so if you're. Vote property and you register the vote, you stand completely used, I do.
Uh, yeah, that is, uh, one of the things, there's a, there's a few, uh. Items that we've outlined that could be used, uh, in the ascertaining of one's residency. That's one of them, we also talk about, um, we also talk about your driver's license, where that address is, we talked about vehicle registration, whether your vehicles registered at that location. Um, the address for your income taxes, those sorts of things, uh, to try and identify. You know, we don't have it, you have to have three of these, you know, we don't have to read it that way. It's basically the assessor we need to look, and sometimes it'd be real easy. Get, box you around the, on the voter registration and get your driver's license is the same address, pretty, pretty well done. Other things, otherwise I'll, I'll hold it and bring it up at the next council and see that group's steam come out of there. As they try and comprehend all of this impact. All right, thank you, I'll hold on to that then, uh, for the next.
Thank you for being here. January 8th.
Uh, well, I just, uh, so Penny and Zoni is reviewing some, um, recommendations from town mayor regarding noise activities, and they're having a public hearing at their next meeting. So I would say that the council should.
So I would say that the council should hold if they want to consider the noise organs after, but I think we should allow Penny and Zoney to do what they're going to do and make their decisions before the council tries to consider any action on those orders. I don't know.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with you. And I heard you weren't, um, nosing the extra noise owners, yeah.
Um, well, I mean, we didn't need to leave out agricultural, uh, situation, those were overlooked, so those can certainly be reconsidered by different pushalot committee chairs to do.
There's a few other people I like. Let's see, just go away. I'd like to see it just go away. It doesn't appear that there's much interest to getting that.
I think there are a lot of residents who are afraid to speak right now because the narrative on social media is very negative and people are being attacked if they don't agree. So I think right now there are a lot of people who are not coming and speaking out about anything.
As I said before, I think that it always comes up when there's a, whether it be Angelico's, and there was a group, there was a, uh, going after Angelico's, now there's Wayne, and there's the going after Wayne, and it, it always appears it's had this ordinance. When there's something going on and someone wants to attack someone else in town. And, and somebody said that it should be, uh, an issue between the neighbors, not, uh, and we should not be governing because two neighbors can't get along. Just my opinion.
Well, again, I think Penny and Zoney, you still get some of their issues too, so it needs to be held until after. They look at theirs, and if the council wants to address it in the future. So if you want me to draw it for now, I'll draw it, I don't know if you want to.
You and Tim will start it, and you'll draw that solution.
Do you want to draw that? Okay, then, uh, Tim and I will, will, will be drawn to the noise work for now.
Turn your discussion on that. Do some favor, and draw city by city. New business?
Give no new business.
Manager report.
Thank you. As always, the town manager report is attached to the town council package and is on the town manager page of the website, uh, for those that want to take a look. It includes, uh, the library report and some other information from the various, uh, departments. And we'll mention three items, uh, for the community this evening. One, those of us that have sewer service from the town will remind you that this month we need to pay our, at least the first half of our sewer bills. We can pay the other half in April, but remember, there's only one bill that gets sent, so we have to hang on for that second part if we need it to come in and pay our bill. Plenty of ways to pay. You can come in and do it at the town hall if you want. You can do it online, and there are ways to do it online for free, but you can also use a credit card and pay a little fee. You can drop it in the box outside. Lots of options. The other thing I'll mention is that the election coming up, as we alluded to this evening, for, um, town council and a variety of other positions in the community uh, occurs on November four. The in-person voting is over at the high school on November four, but you can vote by absentee. You need to make those applications now. Those ballots are available if you have a reason to might be available on that day. And additionally, early voting does start Monday, this coming Monday, uh, and we'll basically go through, uh, the Sunday before the election. Uh, with most days being ten to six here at the town hall, uh, and two of those days, uh, being until, starting early and ending late, so starting at eight and ending at eight. Uh, on Tuesday and Thursday of the last week of October, so, uh, residents have opportunities to, uh, come in and cast that ballot, and certainly they are to do so. The last thing I'll mention is, uh, in item on the police department, we'll offer our congratulations and thanks, uh, to Officer Caleb Kavanaugh, who was recognized by Mothers Against Drunk Driving at their recent law enforcement dinner, uh, recognition ceremony for his work on behalf of our community in identifying and stopping, uh, impaired drivers, drunk and otherwise impaired drivers. So Caleb certainly has done good work there, uh, and Officer Kavanaugh should be recognized for that. This is, uh, a, a great, uh, uh, show of his work in the community, so great recognition there, so thank you to him. Uh, those are the comments that I wanted to make this evening. If you have questions, certainly I'll answer them.
Thank you. So we mentioned, uh, community service requests, you know, for service people. I just wanted to mention that Mrs. Cheska at the high school, uh, was the interact board, and they do a lot of service. They allow a lot of service opportunities. So if you have people who are interested in doing service, um, you could send them, I'm sure. I just wanted to mention a little plug, the turkey plunge, to raise money for the food bank, the interact board. Doing that in a couple of weeks, and it raises a lot of money. And then one other thing I wanted to mention, the, um, library comments, anything, I think are amazing. Need involvement, schooling, involvement.
Yes, they do, they're doing great, they're absolutely doing great work, very good.
Thank you. Any other comments or reports? Moving on.
Thank you.
I mean, that's, that is, we already discussed it, but I'm making a one more motion. Firehouse site and development committee. Richard Nautic, he's the, or the chair, Timothy Fabel, vice chair. They had worked together well on the ambulance committee, task force, split team, regulation, they're saying what we're doing. The fire emergency services. Brooke Kaminsky, is representative from the board of finance. William Abbott, representative from the fire commission. Rob Ringenfield, representative from the fire department. The public members, Mary Ann Dassler, James Radovich, South. Make those recommendations.
Can I just say one thing? Oh, yeah, oh, sorry, I'm not, sorry, sorry, I just want to say I'm honored to be picked, because I think, um, Chair is right, I've worked originally in the past and other things, and I think you do get along very well, uh, I think you get a lot accomplished. I am a little upset, I kind of wish this was pushed off the next council. Uh, I think that wouldn't be probably the right thing to do, but again, um, I'm honored to be picked for it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of appointing these members to the fire station committee, sitting in front of a saying aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Jordan, would you agree with aye? All right, four. Approve, three against.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to return nine, made on this totally three thousand one hundred forty-five dollars and sixty-six cents, three ones.
Motion made, it's seconded as three thousand one hundred ninety.
Uh, so three thousand one hundred forty-five dollars and sixty-six cents. Did I say it wrong?
No, I probably heard.
Okay, it was nine refunds.
Motion made, seconded, and return tax refundance. There's no discussion, there's a favor, signify by saying aye, by those name. January thirteen, public remarks. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be a public remark this time? Rob?
Uh, giving, uh, members of the town council. Uh, I'd like to, uh, express my concern regarding the changes to the firehouse, like, development committee, um, you guys to pick me, but, um, like the fire department is, uh, it's a democracy, it's how I got into where I am, I got voted in, just like you do, so, uh, the members of the department aren't too happy right now with the, this evening, so, with that, um, I think that we shouldn't have changed things, uh, firearms should have had more say, uh, they should have had the two original members, uh, and the one not voting member, so. I'm going to work with the higher ups like, uh, the town manager and the finance director, um, work with them every day, uh, just doing my daily duties. Um, so this, uh, project directs the impact to our operations, safety and service convenience, very important. Uh, we have the greatest stake in this building, uh, and will serve as our home base for emergency spots, training, community spots, uh, serviced for decades, uh, to come. Our input is not only valuable, but it's essential to ensuring that the vital decision function of the facility meets the needs for both volunteers and the residents we protect. Uh, we're an all volunteer department, um, like I say every time, if you'd like to join, uh, you're welcome to, uh, we need all the help we can get, uh, especially with the stuff like this evening, so, um, we step up every day, um, just Monday we had like six calls. Uh, we had members take time off work just to, uh, serve the community, uh, that's not something that everybody does every day, so, uh, if you'd like to join, we'll take any time with you. Uh, it's important now that the fire department members, uh, bring critical technical knowledge, the process, personnel are familiar with the NFPA protections, uh, the ISO requirements, and the OSHA safety standards, that most of you probably don't know. Um, this is, uh, expertise ensures the decisions are made thoroughly, and the design and development of this process, uh, meets the safety goals. Operational efficiency, long-term sustainability, uh, removing that direct, uh, input risk, uh, that we see every day and the oversight that we see, um, that we know. Uh, while we're fully, uh, support this collaboration and transparency, uh, reducing our representation limits our ability to help, uh, guide this process, uh, responsibly. For that reason, the, we think the fire department cannot good faith support or participate in this committee under the proposed structure. We respectfully have to ask the council to reconsider what you guys just decided to do. Uh, as of right now, uh, I will be taking the vote in the fire department, and they will have the last say, uh, on who's on this committee. So if they don't want me to do it, then I won't too, so, um, just remember that, they want the say, they, they need this vote, so. Uh, next meeting, you guys come back and make a, a different decision. Last thing, one of the members you appointed this evening to the firehouse committee blocked the fire department from posting on, uh, online, so they wouldn't allow us to post, which is very disheartening, six posts to eighteen thousand residents, blocking the firehouse.
Couple of things. Obviously, it's eleven streets, then, uh, I got from a very live source today that the building will be on the contract before Tuesday this week. That being said, even if we had to drop five million into the building, it's going to be a lot better than forty-five to fifty million dollars, that's what it costs to build. A brand bill, which, again, tax rates are, nobody, I don't need for that. As far as the committee part. But I agree that it really shouldn't have been done at this time, it should have been done by the next committee as well. But the people that are, I mean, there was nobody asked, no volunteers, paper wise, nonsense. I mean, are there people on there that know how to build a building, know what the, the site's going to be like? AD compliance, OSHA, et cetera, NFPA? I really don't know, I mean, not knocking anybody, but it really shouldn't have been done at this time, I think. In reference to noise, it's, this, I'm looking at using the nineteen, eighteen, twenty-five draft. This noise owners, it's extremely pointing. There is excessive noise to which decibel, which, which decibel limit you're going to try to pick to do something such as this. Motor vehicles can't hear from a hundred feet away, that's forty percent of the vehicles coming down. Amplified sound. So, we understand that other thing, Angelico's or some of the bar has outside, is that how do you limit that? If anybody has new places. I mean, somebody has something on their own property, it's a sound as well. Right, in our town, we have different construction hours. What you have in draft is, is reasonable, uh, and we have prohibions on Sunday, only for contractors, not for anybody else. Landscapers, that's just actual construction contractors. Um, what we do is in November to March, it's daylight sunset, because that's the only thing we work anyhow, because it darkens more than pretty soon. And, you know, you're getting back to the, you know, decibel limits on blast, you know, blast is, I think, decibel limits on blast. You don't really have, how do you have decibel limits on jacket? I mean, un, unstoppable, the only person that can get a delivery. Be based on this, so, I don't know if that's, I have more, but I'll leave it there. Thanks.
Anyone else who would like to make up their conscience at this time? Those agenda items, I don't think there's any hands raised. Agenda fourteen, communications correspondence and announcements. Okay, September twenty twenty-five board commission summary. We have that in the package. Agenda fifteen, executive session.
Mr. Chair, I made the motion that we go into executive session for strategy and negotiation regarding collective bargaining. I invite the town manager, um, the finance director, and the chief of general. There will be no action taken after the executive session.
We need a second session.
Motion. Going to executive session since. Executive session.